February twenty second, twenty twenty one at six thirty P M. As we stand in the open case of bed relief. We're proud of all the Lord, we want to thank you for many blessings you have bestowed upon us, Lord, as we ask of it. He is Lord of your watchovers and gives you wisdom to make the right decisions to my folks people of town. And there the COVID epidemic throughout our country and the world, Lord, we ask you to watch over them and feel and keep them safe, my precious name, amen. I pray the ladies to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic towards its end. One nation, united, in the bill of liberty and justice for all. Again, trouble us. Okay, if y'all have can't look at you gentlemen, the only comments I make on that good, that's a plenty more great to see the I number. See. Would you rest? Any other changes or comments about the? The agenda of mine, but I have much with say that with that one change. Okay. Yes, that be on the right of the agenda. You can put that under A C. We have two things. The additions. Do that. So any other changes or comments, it might have much to say agenda to the addition. All same, all those. I thank you. Moving on to I four. Look at all I was on the same agenda, consider routine being acted by one motion, but remember the government's body request. The item will be removed and consent agenda considered several. If commission has an opportunity for consent and send us, they close changes or comments that I have written said be consented during this entire. So the all same, all those, I thank you. Okay, I'm going to comment. I don't see anybody. Want to make any, therefore, there's no reason not to do so, we'll move on. Down out of six. That's like six eight, the February we see both vacancies. Uh, we're in the process of filling two vacancies, we had a total of ten nominees, which doesn't have much we've had in a long time. And uh, now we got a lot of good people. Uh, that kind of fine, I'm glad to see them that, and they're wonderful boys, and I hope that continues, that we see these nominees. Are there any comments before we go into the nomination?
Mayor, I would ask for a comment, please.
Yes, may I?
Um, you know, I was reminded there by feedback from a previous meeting that, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of talent out there. One of the candidates there, um, that I'd asked us just to figure out, if not for tonight, it's our another opportunity to serve the town is Shannon Minn. Shannon is sitting for his general contractor exam as, you know, runs, runs business. And so with, with his talent, um, it might not be the best fit for an ABC board position, however, it might be a fit for other positions within the town that tap in that area that's. I just want to end that into the public pressure we're trying to do now, since uh, is responsible, but um, not even know about that.
Thank you. Any other comment? My first thing is, um, sorry, I think nomination just comes. No, it's not like, I think you guys have more comment.
I just want to say, I read through these and, you know, I think. I'm floored by the number that we have, the variety of qualifications we have, it's really interesting, isn't it, there? So if we're opening up for nomination, I'd like to re-nominate Richard Trexler. He's done outstanding job on board, actually, in terms of these, um, in value class, and I'm very happy that he's qualified.
And I want to open for that, that one. And I don't make a lot of nominations, but I'd like to really make a statement, wanting to get the both of the nominations, but both. That's not a problem. Dean Ward. For position, uh, Mr. Ward is a business owner here in the county, one of the races on the county, lives just outside of our city limits. Uh, he's an honorary cell on the front elect board, who's set on a couple of awards. Uh, he's a great asset to the community as well, he's a businessman, and he's been here as supported our communities, uh, in this county, based on the more people in the county for a long time. I think he gets it all around this place, he's got to work this. So he's your comments and wishes.
I was actually in favor of another candidate, um, Jared Cornish. Looking through the applications, so there were, there were some people that didn't seem to put any effort at all into the applications and didn't put references. And uh, Mr. Cornish did a, um, I thought a very good application and something else, and it was bring a lot of knowledge. Um, from outside of our area, he's a retired military man and, and some other stuff, I was very impressed by his application.
And I'm asking you permission, uh, this time. We got a lot of good people. I'm glad we have that tough opponent, and we make this day come to this, I'm glad we get the quality people. We get the change we can't pick too. I hope some of these people, all the challenges we got coming up, if they don't get there, at least they don't quit. Literally, come up, oh, we are. On ABC board or other board, so. I appreciate that, and uh, we got two nominees on the floor right now, we've been nominated today. I mean, you have a comment, but about a nomination also. Okay, we got three, we got three we wanted to sign, but. Okay, Mr. Tector, the first one up, all in favor of Mr. Tector, say aye. And that's right, all right, we've got that first position, uh, next one will be. Uh, Mr. Dean Ward, all in favor, aye. And the.
With you, you need him in this, or without him?
One minute. There's also that's all in favor, aye. All opposed? We just got one left. Okay, the position would be filled by Mr. Tector. But we're not here tonight, but uh, downtown manager, if you can contact him.
Yes, sir. We'll contact them, have a meeting with the ABC board chairs for organization, and then have a sort of a person.
Okay. I'll go with that, any other comments? Okay, moving on to I'm six, the Parks and Recreation Board vacancy. Mountain County, you got two other things, and tell us that before.
Yes, sir, um, currently we have one vacancy as a result of the resignation of Mr. Cheryl Page. We do have one applicant, uh, he was here in the lobby tonight, um, that would like to speak for a few moments to be about Ms. Marion Faganquist. And also following that.
Yeah, we're not nominating mine, but that's normal.
Yes. So we also have two additional vacancies that we would request that you authorize the staff of advertised board, and those will be for March.
So we have one position before we advertise.
So at the last meeting, you offered us this to advertise one vacancy with the frozen date of February seventh. And for that vacancy, we'll have a page.
We have a full letter saying.
Oh, great, thanks. I.
Can you apply for the Park and Recreation Board?
Yes, I did.
I've known it for a long time. I like. Uh, but uh, for a rule and family, can just give a little break, I think yours, I'd like permission for both.
Okay, all right, my name's Marion Faganquist, I've lived in this area now sixteen years. I love this area with all of the tremendous wealth that is going on here. I think it's important that we be good stewards of our natural resources, and when I saw the, um, application for the board. I thought, oh, maybe this might be what's what could be value, um. I have worked at the chamber, lots of events, planning, all of that, very familiar with what goes into it. And I will say, I think it's vitally important that the green space that we do have available, we make available to as citizens. So much of it is getting developed by the amenities, and people going to have space. Get to know what, where would their kids? So that was my main interest in wanting to be part of the board.
Go ahead, new question, Mary Ann, standing here to help us with all the projects that are due to the town. So that is the Park Board, set on the bottom of the county. And the big assets in this area can work hard.
Well, how do you work, yeah?
You're very active, too. Mary Ann, I'd like you to find for. Y'all have any questions, y'all like that?
All right, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you.
Mary Ann, well, thank you for that, we want to hopefully just.
Okay, can I leave or say?
Okay, any comments? I just want to say it sounds like you got the right attitude for this, I saw your qualifications, incredible, and in fact, I think you understand what we're trying to do.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, um, I've seen yearly growth, and I've seen some. Decisions made without meant that I think we're in the best interest of our natural resources.
You see some of the people's fishing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, we have the nomination, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, aye.
Thank you so much, I'm sure you're doing your part here with all of your, your dynamic, your community.
Mary Ann, good.
Well, I have to sign in part.
Stay right the way I may.
But, okay.
You can put down a file, and do it anyway you want to do it. It's written on the file, it's that. I represent my.
I'm Marion Faganquist.
I solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the constitution and laws of the United States and the constitution and laws of North Carolina, but not inconsistently in. That I will faithfully discharge and deuce my office of the number of Parks and Recreation Board, or the town of Bellville, so have we got. You said that.
I do.
You're right, right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, move on to I'm seven, uh, old business, same, that's the name, run, I'm assuming, you're talking about this, and uh, the whole contract, uh, six C. And wait, down on.
There, uh, into the vegetation of Mr. Fox with, uh, late last week, the city authorizes to advertise the county, or they concede in addition to the two parts of the agreement. And all of them will have the presentation, part seventeen.
You can comment for permission for, so, two positions, right, yes, two.
Uh, nine away, and one on the planet.
Okay, yes. Okay, uh, so correct, I've got any permission. Okay, now I'm telling you, we'll move on to now, seven old business, the age that they were running new project. And that is for all.
Yes, I'd like to thank our partnership for his hard work over the past month and the past, uh, we work together on several projects, one of those D H A writing, L V writing. I'm still working on getting another pole and saw, a lot of old, old bodies, keep any of these good. Um, she's also been supervising a lot of sewer projects over the years, and um, I'd like to send my thanks to them for that. And we continue to work on the energy, uh, backroom and everything.
So you know, I've kind of forgotten one or two of them, Dean, uh, might have just getting the bathroom fully operational, a few other things, or operations, the way we intend to be. And, and before the COVID got here, that, that is our school, but also another project. Beyond building, pursuing the finish path, problems pass up. Uh, or attempt, and I think y'all need to work in those behind the scenes a lot, even with our signs that's out front now. On the road, these kind of, I think, guys, that just take praise on the back all the time, he was done. And so next block, does a lot of time for that. Uh, we have a resolution twenty one dash oh three. I guess I'll approve on this, but same file, uh, we're gonna try to give him, so we can have a legal presentation. The resolution twenty one dash oh three, if I could. I'm likely to approve this, uh, all in favor, aye, aye, aye. Sometime that you will be contacting, or somewhat by contact, to give your, to make a, to, to. He does a lot of good work. Okay, moving on to seven eighty two, the update on the water, update on. Adrian, all one.
Yes, Brandon.
Adrian.
Adrian, can you hear me?
Adrian?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
There we go, well, hello, and it's good to see you guys again, um, so our update on the water public access grant. We had, um, a great meeting actually out on site with a couple key decision makers along the way, particularly, um, a few guys from Brunswick County that would be involved with the permitting process and making sure that the canoe kayak launch that we want to install, um, will be up to code, uh, so they joined us out at the park along, uh, with a gentleman from Easy Dock who was participating in pulling together the design and the cost estimate for the grant, and then we had somebody from Division of Coastal Management, um, out there as well. And what we thought would be a good idea moving forward would be to establish the replacement for the motorized boat launch ramp. So this is the one that was destroyed during the hurricanes and are used for, um, you know, emergency management practices and rescues and whatnot. Uh, priority one being to replace that, and then priority two being to install the kayak paddleboard canoe launch. Uh, so what, uh, we are working on now is getting an update, um, design, which actually includes, you know, a component of engineering, um, you know, being able to take into consideration the existing, um, site considerations and nailing down a design and final cost estimate for both of those components. But they are going to get started on, um, the part of the project that will repair that motorized boat dock that is currently not there at all. Uh, so that'll be part one, and then part two, um, should come not long after that.
Okay, thanks for that, Adrian, uh, any question from permission like that, Adrian?
Nope, a stunning job again, Adrian, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You do without him. You should get that. Um, I say, Adrian, um, I probably, I hope I can, uh, maybe with, with Athena, I'd like to give you a call before the end of the week, if you got some time available.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I look forward to talking to you, thank you for the update, and we appreciate you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any comments about the war right this update, if not, we'll move on to seven, these street repairs and drainage repairs update. I guess you know, um, repairs can have, of course, go right back, call back to regular roads, where Greg Paul is. They still go, mainly finished all the ditch work over there, and that road was flooding, which now I noticed in all this rain, um, not flooded. The water is cranking, that's a major issue, or a concern we have with that repaid road. But that part of it's in process, South Old Town Line, Mountain County, I miss something, let me know. You know, they had issues, we had a pothole, we had a drainage pipe at the very end of South Old Town Line. Um, that water was flowing up, running through the guy's yard, and put in that can repaired. Uh, but we had to keep by, I've been noticed right around town, we do have some other issues that we probably need to, we're in the press, if you will. But I missed, you need repairs.
Yes, I'm passionate to work on the N C D O, we are having a few, uh, private issues there. And because of the tornado, N C D O is going to get the response of that, but they, they have a center queue. And then also, it's very much changed, though, it is doing some other work there that is going to actually help us.
Yeah, I can clear, I can clear that tree, free, and I think a lot of those, some ditches there. Space, folks, they're right away off, so it probably, maybe they're coming in off of the chapel, was, was, yeah. So they've been over there, I've seen them up there working. Big asset, big issue, look like we have it now, with all the rain. Just what, you don't want a roof, so, uh, where it gets up on that asphalt, not gonna last very long. We're starting to pothole, popping up everywhere. But, uh, if y'all know anybody finds any issues, let's get it done, that's really, we got the power money to address the issue that we really did work on. And if we got pothole, better to fix it before they really get bad. See, that's easier, so I think we're doing a good job staying on that, I think, go ahead, sir.
So when we're done, if that's what matters.
But I think with everything we're doing, we're staying on top of, uh, our road issues, I think, fairly good. Particularly, I'm happy you got some really great comments about regular road. We've got some comments, we got the bay, and not from our town each way, and I won't go to be follow on that. But we took care of, took care of it, and got it repaired. So, Rick Cole does get very beating dry weather again, and warm stuff, they'll pay the rest of that road out. And then to go and pick it up, back the road, all the way back to their businesses, and hopefully we can get Paul road that back, the road, that's not as well. Now, that's just for sex, not businesses, I thought, I thought, just movie again. Trying to see what we can do to help further that, push it harder.
Yes, I was just gonna say that, you said that we're staying on top of things, things like potholes, and a very small minor example, but there were complaints from residents about potholes in Island Shores, and I mentioned it to the town manager, and Jim was out there almost immediately to patch that, and they were very happy to hear that and see that. Unfortunately, it is a recurring pothole, it's happening over and over again, and I think Jim knows as well, but he fixed it almost immediately.
He was getting, he was getting stuff like, sending a label on that, to, to get contracts, that's such a big work.
But in the meantime, Jim was on top of it, great.
Mountain County, next, right, Mr. Peter, I really do appreciate what you've done. Any other comments? Might move on to seven C, Roma's virus update. I think everybody's been tracking it, and especially in our county, and I won't go too far, you know, they've had the issues on the amount of vaccines coming down, but up front, they had some issues about. You had the hospital, county. Those one didn't, uh, so the county commissioners, those also mayors here, the county. I'm glad, uh, I'm right on ourselves, town availability, one pushed it hard, we got the letter sent. But when that through government's office, they give feedback, I think it helped us, uh, get a lot of the, those of the vaccine coming down into our county. Uh, in the morning, they are gonna open up another site that up here, northwest part, all seven four, that will start out on eight thirty. They're trying to draw out, uh, the areas where to get it in our county, and hopefully, now, like, they're telling us we get a lot larger quantity of vaccine coming into camp. But that's a good one, and I'll be out, uh, tomorrow morning, with well monitor and some of that, seeing how it's going. But, uh, I mean, people in here, hand vaccine. So, uh, you know, and when we're touching that, I know y'all keep up the record, I think right now we have a hundred and twenty nine deaths in Rock County. Nine point five percent of county's test that are positive right now. Total first vaccination, those are minutes, in the county's twenty four thousand six hundred and one, that were groups one and two. Those are two current groups that are eligible for, uh, the vaccine right now. So I think the total overall, uh, positive cases in our county is seven thousand seven hundred and sixty five cases. So, you know, right now, they had, right before we came into the meeting, on the national view, they said we just went over five hundred thousand deaths. And while, you know, hundred and three hundred and something, people for five hundred thousand, they'll be five. So, people have mixed feelings about where to take the vaccine, and I, even my wife still kept, we shared it. Going through things, but I'll go on the internet, find people saying all kinds of things. But, I think overall, vaccine don't help. You hear the real explanation, some of the experts vaccinated, vaccinated. Vaccine is not as complicated as we thought it was. They can also adapt to the different versions that are happening now with the same vaccine. As a matter of fact, they said now, the way they designed this, in six months, if another variation of COVID comes out, they can produce the vaccine now. But the current vaccine is out now, they said these strains we have up here so far, it does affect. Stop, I'm not on that variation to the COVID. That's a good thing, so. Any comments from Michigan on that?
Yeah, I want to thank God, we had a reason, but I know that this is not a jurisdictional thing, so people in terms of county. And, you're also, my in-laws got it, my parents got it, they're efficient, they were good, and I know it takes some of the burden. I just, thank you for that, amazing.
We, we've done, we can get fifty thousand vaccines, like, for, but we, we have to process all of it.
Thanks for that. As I said, I think, I'm glad to see at least, I think the overall quantity of vaccine coming out, not what I thought it was at first. And a lot of things, I think we're starting to get away from that, some of the vaccines start to come in, that's just a matter of setting up the right areas to give it in the process, Odell Williams Center, they have the National Guard there supporting them, they're at a union camp. And they've been a great asset, they've been involved in these types of issues before, so it's something they do. And they do, the day I was there, I think they've got close to about, right up over a hundred and fifty. So, things starting to move, over by summer, I hope everybody finds out, I see, so we get our hat, please, one of those are getting saved. Okay, the comment, we'll move on to seven D, Vision Twenty Thirty Plan update, round time, I just want to start it off.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we talked a lot about our vision plan, and we are now ready to move to the public input portion of the process. Some of the technical requirements, so that she can go with some of our ideas for that process.
Hello, can you guys hear me again?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So for the Vision Twenty Thirty Plan, we have completed the very first portion, so this would be pulling together the steering committee and the stakeholder committee. We've had two meetings with each, all done, you know, online through Zoom. And we submitted a survey to both groups, we got a lot of survey responses back. And now what we are doing is we are taking those survey responses and we're incorporating those into the public involvement period. So according to our timeline, we have the public involvement period slated for the month of March. And what we are planning on doing is we're gonna have a website set up that is gonna be home-based for the Vision Twenty Thirty Plan. We're gonna have a survey that will be available both online and in hard copy format. And then we would like to hold two in-person meetings, and I'm thinking that those meetings would be best if outdoors, hopefully the weather will be nice. You know, in mid to late March, and we can hold some meetings outdoor with social distance measures in place. And then we will also have a pre-recorded webinar that we can set up, and then that way, you know, if you're at home and you're wanting to participate, then, you know, you can watch this quick webinar and have an understanding of what we're doing with the Twenty Thirty Plan, and then you can take the survey with a little bit of background information, or you can attend the public meeting, whichever works best. And then, you know, we'll make sure that there's always, you know, hard copies available at Town Hall, in case somebody doesn't have access to a computer. We'll make sure we reach those populations as well. But according to our timeline, we'll be spending March gathering public input, and then from that point, we'll start working on pulling together the draft plan. And if you guys have any questions, of course, I'm happy to answer them.
Internet sounds like a great plan. Like I say, we're all, you know, keep up here, so thanks, we've got you on our team. And, thanks for taking control of this, kind of giving us the guidance we need. And we just look forward to it, look forward to working with you more and more as time goes on. I think a lot more events are gonna open up, we're gonna need to expertise in. All we gotta thank you again, we look forward to this, we have public comments.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any comments from the Michigan? But thank you again, Adrian, we appreciate it. We will be back in touch. I mean, manager, any comments?
No, sir, it's all with Adrian, and also Robert, for everything that they've done to promote this project's success. And we will continue to move forward, to propose to the public, given us all of your input, and your ideas, we'll be sure that we ship it back.
Looks like that's what we need, a plan, it looks like we got a plan.
You got it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, moving on to seven E, personal policy update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have delivered to you this afternoon, a draft, this is part two of the personal policy update. And Parma, as well as Mr. Blanchard have worked hard on this second draft. And that's that we do, that and for much of the promised, uh, next week. In this draft, we focus on one thing that we have not held before, and that's a specific section for preliminary. And yes, so we will do my part, of the possibility that we will do. And so, we ask that we do that section, because it will happen.
Mayor, I want to point out one thing, and I apologize, if I could mention this to, a thing earlier on this. One of the things we need to consider when we look at, when we revisit this. It's on page thirty, and it's article thirteen, repeal, and it's an adoption of this ordinance, appeals and basically about the federal personal policy. If we've adopted our power policy by ordinance, I'd suggest that you just repeal the ordinance and adopt the new one by resolution. And there's a long set of. You create property rights and a whole lot of other things when you adopt them by res, by ordinance, and it strips the town manager discretion in the circumstances that may arise, or you for that matter. So, you know, it doesn't do any good to say none of these things are guarantees, if you've adopted it by ordinance, they are guarantees. So what you want to do is adopt them by resolution instead, but that's a long explanation for it, we deal with that when it comes back up later.
Anything, no. Any other comments from the Michigan? Question you asked about the background checks, it makes us parallel. Why would I wish to give them?
Yes.
I'm good, I'm good. Yeah, yes, we, we addressed this with ABC's word, because of that, we saw previously, and the personal manager, the mayor, that it's now, they don't say. And I'm kind of bullish on the same thing.
Any other comments? Thank y'all for the first comment. We don't need to present anymore, move on to eight, Rover's agenda. Under eight, eight, resolution twenty-one dash four, resolution sure support will be. I don't know, how many y'all? I know you heard about it on the news. We actually went down to the site, approved that, that's three deaths, and Andrews. Hear the stories, talk to people on the ground. And also, at the same time, when we had tragedy, so many people spared, I mean, go up, look at their homes. You see all the trees right up through the back of their home, completely taken off the ground, not one shingle removed from the house. And see them, that was, it got to be a higher power. Some of those cases. It was devastated, it was well covered, so I think our county emergency services, fire, rescue, law enforcement, volunteer, crew, red cross, all of them on the ground, they on the ground fast. Pointed those feet in there. And a lot of them still got challenges, they grieving their losses. One home was completely destroyed, so I mean, there's nothing, it's gone. They're buried, so. Pretty bad, very wide distribution of wind, and also the actual sail moved twenty-two miles. But it's been a lot more devastation than what it was. The breeze scattered for at least almost four miles throughout the woods from the east side to the west side, and run across highways, so to speak. They're still out there, certain some parts of the woods, at least there were, look anything, they find that, like, they tremendous, that breeze, they had all the fields, and the wood. I feel for those people. I hope we can in some way support it, on the resolution, but. I got a copy, thank you. This one, I will read, the resolution, it's fourth and victims of the February twenty twenty-one ES three tornado in Brum County. Whereas the National Weather Service confirmed that ES three tornado, early morning hour of February sixteenth, Brum County Executive Resident, Old Slope Road, the Ocean Ridge Plantation Community. Whereas Brum County has declared a state of emergency, with winds up to a hundred and sixty mile an hour. Great havoc, widespread damage in ten, taking the lives of three individuals, and damage of at least fifty homes. And whereas emergency responders announced, recoverers from this event is going to be long-term. The tornado's estimated to be two hundred seventy-five yards wind. And they have set up a tornado relief command center, and whereas this was the first tornado fifteen years that claimed lives in our county. And whereas the Red Cross is assisting victims in St. Luke Lutheran Church in Ocean Mall Beach, to help displaced families. Because only page had been set up to assist victims in Ocean Ridge Plantation Community. Whereas Town Valvo expressed its heartfelt sentiments for those whose lives were lost, and would like to show our support for those affected. Now therefore, we recall meeting duty notice and stem with the Town Valvo as a compassionate gesture of support for the families affected by the tornado, would like to show our support by organizing and donation drive to gather emergency supplies such as canned food, clothing, and other supplies needed when recovered the ES three tornado victims about this twenty-sixth day of February twenty twenty-one. Any comments? Or could I have a motion to set? On my favor?
Hi.
I'll both, uh, that. Addition, yeah, that, we did get some addition places that people bring out, and things that the country shares on through the service, or not currently moving. But there's a further family assistance, Ocean Ridge Master Association, the county, you know, we do. I guess we get those posted on our social media, and that's like what you should be talking about here, so. You know, I think we, you know. I think it's good there, Steve, I'm hoping we gather information tomorrow, be informed. And then, if there's any specific needs that we think that we might be able to help or support a family that's really in need, or just, like I said, make this spot where people drop things off, get down tools, and then we'll take a look at that, if we get their information about the traumatic experience. I was down there the next morning, and a lot of our guys, one of all these emergency people, and they're thinking from eleven-thirty to midnight. They did not get a warning before they get. Actually, one, the one came out after the tornado actually touched down. I know, and I was getting ready to go with it, but left little, left fifteen, there was no tornado warning that time. So, proof of that.
Mayor, is there anything we can do within one of this, and our general fund to our donations, or the Red Cross, or anything that we're able to do in our town? And support?
But that, that's entirely up to the Michigan, but what I'd like to do, could, I'd like to get all the information on the families directly affected by it. Then, to our organizations that if we want to make a donation, we're facing them, that we know that whatever we give, it's gonna be ready to pay. And I get that back to y'all, hopefully, some, by tomorrow evening, if you can mail out and fill that information. And next time, man, we make calls to, so. I'll be out tomorrow, so I'll be talking with people, responders, and groups, and I'll find out that information, or if they citizen family that really has major concern, right? You have a comment? Uh, now, we'll move on to eight D, in the town, where's that? Town manager?
Austin, the new town, with Sandy, um, and I want to thank Mayor Fruton so much for sitting in all of, you know, this project, also the town for all the hard work it created, the hot pages that we sent to our, they have to buy Anderson EC solutions, to get this project done, and they're official for taking all the photos that we have, the photos that are made all over, that is someone who's, the one photo shoot. So I hope that you are pleased with the upgrade that we have. It's not the fanciest option that we really have, so it is a mid-break, and I think it's a great improvement from what we previously had. And I think it's something that's been riding in the mood that we're user-friendly for the public. Our last website was more of a website that was for the staff's use, this is a website for the public, for them to use. So, I hope that you're pleased with it, and I ask for your feedback.
And I guess, because I have, certainly got, I think part of the pack breaks down, but get access information, but I, I love the updates, I'll probably update that, yeah, they said. I notice certainly you were how important this, like communicate with the state's people. And keep it this current, and keep it informed on what's going on here in the town, because don't get your, you don't get it out there, nobody knows what happened, or it's happening, or even what you're looking at. And we want to make ourselves well-known. But I think it's a website, another piece of that pie, that the folks can go on and look at it. And hopefully later on, we can even give them some nice videos, do what I might even get permission to a lip sync.
Oh, my.
Yeah, you know, we like to shout out the town, so, you know, but it's a great start. With great idea, get started on, the more public interest we get, the more access they can see what we offer here at the Town Valvo. It's best to be, yeah. It's better to complete the town.
Yes.
I got a question, you have an employment, click box up there, is that limited to town employees, or can, can we see board use of that proposal?
That's only for the town employees, but I can link all of your ABC poll.
Yes.
Where, um, they can click on the employment page for you.
And you'll send that contact information for us to post agendas and meeting minutes once they're approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a work in progress, you learn a lot through a minute.
Yeah, it'll take some time.
But I think it's, I think everybody agrees, it's much better than what we had.
Yeah, um, I'm, 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 I'm not, it's my problem. Forty years behind in social media or whatever. But if you want to look at it, and, uh, I think it's going to be good for the people in the town, people other places that are looking to make a move in this area. Also, to have a good view, snapshot of who we are, and what kind of community we have. But I'm sticking with that.
And as far as the contact with the, uh, the board commissioners and saw them on, I have my Facebook, Instagram, tweet, I think some of us have, as well.
You have a comment? Move on. We're going to move on to eight C, uh, first, that's a, on that, I can tell you on that, like I say, the whole process of transportation moves slow. It's called, we're in the process now, actually of funding the existing programs that were done probably two years ago. Do you think it's going to get back from funding, budget can't be basically restored, it's still got funding issues. When the leaves are getting the projects that were put on hold are coming back online, that means our project out here will eventually come back up, and go back about a year. But the real big projects like the handstand bypass and all that is now back on track and getting funded. So I got a meeting coming up this week, hopefully we'll see some of the best, while I've seen, we're still looking at current projects and getting money back to these projects that made the start of this.
Mayor, they're still looking at a new bridge.
Yes, I think I put, if not on the back burner, it's part of our own process, because the heat's getting on about the Cape here, the water bridge. Uh, some I was writing, I can't discuss about it, they won't say anything, but, uh, we are looking at options right now to replace the Cape here. I think it's pretty simple, we have to come up with what that is, for the, for the, anyway, we're doing. But it is, it's a crop, we're looking at it, since we put that information out, I promise y'all, it's no equivalent. Okay, um, there's no more comments about that, uh, move out of my possession. Again, we got, sure, we sure did. We're looking at this, being a lot of pro. Okay, on eight D, we have one of our coworkers, this is from her sixth anniversary. Got the resolution here. Miss Brenda Williams, keep coming out here. Hold on, run. Oh, yeah. The resolution by Belleville Water Commissioners acknowledging Brenda Williams' sixth work anniversary. Appreciation and thanks, whereas Brenda Williams began his work with Town Building on February twenty fifteen. Where Brenda Williams has served as administrative assistant, tax collector, deputy town clerk, permanent specialist, reservation specialist, finance clerk, and whereas Brenda Williams has hosted the town annual two-shot planing, built a special business relationship with town vendors, contractors, and come the extra mile by completing various of special projects. Whereas Board of Commissioners wishes to express sincere appreciation. Thanks, Brenda, for your longstanding service to residents and business owners in Belleville community. Now therefore be revolved by Belleville Water Commissioners. Uh, say aye to Mayor and Commissioner, Town Manager, hereby congratulate Brenda Williams for six years of dedicated service to the town, express heartfelt thanks, appreciation for her service and encourages everyone to, excuse me, celebrate her success. This is twenty-second day of February twenty twenty-one, but I have a motion that we accept Resolution twenty-one dash five. So on the favor?
Aye.
Oppose, aye, aye. Like, uh, camera, even. I just think from your service, I'm looking forward to a lot more. I like taking on runs. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There in the ways. Danny's pushing our town, working with people, community, people walk in here, make nice happen, that's all we need. Thank you, Deborah. Okay, under, um, nine, both sessions, on North Carolina statute, one forty-three dash three eighty-eight, that's eleven eight three, and so we'll be coming. I can have a motion, well, both sessions, on the favor, aye, on both, aye, aye. I'll have to come back in last session.
Come in.
On the favor?
Aye.
Oppose, aye, aye. Okay, good, I haven't played it, come back in last session.
Come in.
On the favor?
Aye.
Oppose, aye, aye. Uh, Mr. Moore would like to make some comments first, about, I mean.
We just discussed the, uh, litigation matter, where, let the, part of the fight, we discussed, uh, the USG, that makes the gun matters.
Okay.
The two pending lawsuits.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any more comments from any commissioners? Okay, move on to item ten, uh, Mr. Town Clerk, you got any other comments you'd like to make, sir?
No, sir.
Any commissioners, Mayor approach any comment?
Sure.
I have, okay, yes, sir.
I do, um, I, I want us to keep all of the youth and out of town, and I call some prayers, and, and, and other members. North Trump had a false sixteen-year-old student yesterday. And so there's some people in the community that are going to be struggling with that.
And they could.
But the, uh, the visitation of P and R this Friday, that first have this church in ways of, how will we, evidence of that, um, the town's plans. Everybody, keep others in there, call some prayers.
Thank you for that, sir. There's no other comments, uh, that I have, which we share. On the favor?
Aye, on both, aye, aye.